Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Pledge, please call the board.
Trustee Barnes.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Remote. Trustee Coleman.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Yeah.
Trustee Satt.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
May I purchase?
Trustee one, two.
Yeah.
Trustee one.
Right here.
Trustee one, two. Still low. Trustee one, two. Trustee one, two.
Hello, trustee.
Trustee one, two, trustee. May I purchase?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. Ah, I would like to make a motion to move item number ten, financial matters A, rolling number I. Uh, also, item B, petitions, agreements, and action items, rolling number one, two, and three. I would like to move them to the top of the agenda under the public commons.
Okay, one, two. Suspend the rule.
No, I don't want to. Okay. I motion to suspend the rules in order to move items, nine items ten, A, I, B, one, two, and three, uh, to go directly under public commons.
You mean half the vote.
Pardon?
You mean half the vote. And there's a motion to suspend the rule to break items ten A and ten B from the back of the, uh, agenda to the front.
Sir.
Okay, moved by trustee, um, Barnes, thank you. With the trustee Lee. Okay, any questions? I do have a question. As I stated before, what's the reason? Write that down. Trustee Barnes. I asked what's the reason that you're moving? Why are you moving it?
Hello?
I didn't call the board yet. I'm just asking for, I have a question there for this motion. I just wanted to know what's the reason?
Uh, I, I, this would be, uh, questions and discussion debate. I have no discussion, question or debate for this one.
No, I'm asking you the reason that you're moving. You, that you, that you want to bring this up from the back to the front, not that you're amending the, um, agenda, what's the reason that you're doing it?
I'm amending the agenda because that's the motion that I have on the floor.
Reason?
I, I.
No, I have a reason.
The motion I have on the floor.
Okay, we can do this backwards. All I'm asking you is what is the reason that you're doing it? That's all I'm asking.
Because we wanted to move the business to the top of the agenda.
So now I understand what I'm saying. So therefore we have no reason.
I have given, I have given you the reason.
No, you didn't, no, you didn't. But that's okay.
We want to move the business to the top of the agenda.
We have, we got business all over the agenda, but, okay.
Thank you, sir.
I just asked for, there's no reason. So let's read the record statement. There's no reason that you did, you didn't want to.
The reason is we want to move the business to the top of the agenda.
No, the agenda is written like this every.
That is the reason.
Every, every, every.
There's a motion in the second of the floor.
That's why you raised the motion.
There's a motion in the second of the floor again.
I didn't ask you this question.
I gave you the reason.
I'm asking your reason. You gonna have a.
I want to move the business to the top.
I understand. Okay, nice back question, so.
That's not good.
Um, Madam Pledge, please call the board.
Trustee Barnes?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings for the board meeting that was dated August thirteenth.
So move.
Thank you.
It's moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, secretary. Trustee Carter, any questions? Madam Pledge.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Motion is to approve the general proceeds for the board meeting of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is Michael?
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment, all questions and comments would be directed to the mayor and each speaker. May comment on any matters concerning the visits of villagers to Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may not engage in debate. Comment, reply, or rebuttal. I will answer all questions once our public comments are concluded. Then you come up, please, state your name.
If I start, can I come to the board?
Is there microphone? It's not on. Do you want to approach the mission straight? Sure. How many?
I have three. So the two of them.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Rosie Williams Spague. I'm here as the library director.
What was that say?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Rosie Williams Spague. I'm here as the director of the library from County Public Library in Saw Village. Um, what I just handed to the clerk is a series of a water bills. I'm a little confused about. Um, I came up here on Friday the sixteenth because we opened up our water bill that we had at the time and it showed a past due balance and it showed a significant balance. When we went to go pay it online, we had showed that there was a completely different number that was due on PSN. So at that point, I called village hall and I spoke to the very wonderful lady at the front desk who answered the phone and she told me that I had a completely different amount that was due. So I got confused and she said that she would print me out a copy of our, um, total charges, basically since the account had been created. I came up at that time and at that time she told me that we had a balance of five hundred and twelve dollars due. I asked her if that included the new bill that would be coming out soon. She said no. I said, fine. Then I looked at, our bill had an amount of three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents that was due. PSN said we owed three hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents and she told us we owed five hundred and twelve dollars. When I got here, she said that we had a past due payment from March of this year. I had all my bills with me. At that time, I showed her we have paid every bill we have received. We didn't have never had any past due balances until the bill that states it was due, like a bill date of six one, but it was due five twenty-one. So we all know the bill dates aren't right, but we haven't had any past due balances before that. So I asked her what, what I should about that. She asked me to speak, if I could speak with her boss. I asked to speak with her boss. She said she was in a, uh, meeting with the mayor. She told me to come back on Monday. I asked her for a time. She said, come back on Monday. I said, can I have an appointment? She said she wouldn't, didn't know what she was going to be doing on Monday. So I was called. I called every day since then. I called Friday for an appointment, the sixteenth. I called consecutively every day except for today because at that point I decided I was just coming to the board meeting. So we have a past due balance according to the account of fifty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. I don't see a bill where we haven't paid. We don't show even a past due balance until two months after. And again, I know the bill dates are wrong and there were some problems with the bills, but we don't have a past due balance until the June bill. So I'm just confused. And now at this point, not only do we have a past due balance of fifty-two dollars that's been carrying over, but we have late charges, penalty charges on our sewer. We have penalty charges on the water and that's not something that we should be responsible for. So I didn't want to come to the board meeting because that's taking time away from my family, but if I call for it, we can have with literally no response, I don't know what else to do.
Well, it won't be three minutes. Be real brief. Name's John Howard, fourth, uh, Saw Village IG. And my team is, uh, working on a few things, but thought I should just uncover, uh, something today just to bring it to your attention. This weather, wow. John Howard, Saw Village IG. I'm not gonna be up here very long. I'm not gonna take the three minutes. My team, uh, legal team has been working on, uh, quite a few things for the village. But there's just one that was, uh, emailed over to me today that I just brought to your attention regarding Article Six, uh, veto power for the village of Saw. So if that hasn't been actually, uh, applied to your ordinance, your mayor doesn't have veto power. So I'd just like you to take a look at that. And usually when my team brings something up, it's, eh, it's pretty serious. So along with some of the other things that we're still working on. That's it.
Hi, uh, my name is Deborah Turner. I have a couple of questions. I'm kind of confused as to what the role of the administrator, the village administrator is, and who overrides whom? Is the mayor overriding the administrator? And if the administrator is making decisions in regards to things that's going on in the village, um, is that not a requirement for the administrator as well as all the other, uh, committee heads here, uh, obligated to speak in regards to what's going on here in the village? Uh, the question I'm having in regards to the finance department, um, is the questions that the trustees are asking for, the finance, why is there confusion as to how to get that information? I do hear a lot of things about the bank statements and what's in the bank, but why isn't that something that we see as taxpayers? Where our money is going? How it's getting paid? Checks and balances? What's going out? What's coming in? And where are we standing at this time?
My name is Senator Favors. And I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. If this ordinance, if this ordinance isn't legal, then why are you vetoing it?
I'm Francine Anderson. And Mr. Mayor, my question is, um, I understand that the trustees did put forth an OIG and the person who apparently is a person who's over that just said his team bought him information. So did we hire a team? Can you ask that? Answer that question for me? And if so, where are the funds for that coming from? Since the trustees is repetitive in saying that since we have no budget, then we can't pay bills. So if we have an OIG, how are they getting paid? Uh, and since his team found out that Saw Village does not have an ordinance, this town still runs by the State of Illinois muni codes. So why would there be a problem? And why would that be presented as a problem from a team? So you need to clear this up for the people. And I would like for you to ask each one of these trustees, who were the voters of what, who brought this into our town, which we have other ways of investigating. What was their purpose? And if their purpose is to continue to spend village dollars that you say you don't know nothing about or a position and something that you created, that now you have a person that has been hired to do something in it, that has bought a team to, to the Saw Village. What a problem. Can somebody please clear that up? And hopefully one of these four trustees who made those votes, you can ask them. And if they can't answer it here today, maybe you guys can put that on your Facebook pages or maybe you can put it so in a e-news or put it somewhere so the citizens can truly find out what is going on with this OIG. That is my greatest concern.
You only get one chance.
Oh, you just pause the pass.
You don't get, you don't, you don't even bother. But that's it. Okay, um, in regards to the, um, water bill that we have here, I would like for, and she's here, the finance director after this meeting, or can you get her, the person that asked, is asking about this phone number so we can sit down and go over and to find out what it is that's, uh, the question that I saw. I'm looking at the, um, water bill that you gave me. So, um, and then, um, I'm not going to speak for someone else's department. So I just, I just, I know what you're saying, so I just want to make sure that it's correct. So if you can make an appointment with the, um, the finance director, if you can give her your number and we can give you a call back with a date and time where we, we can, she can meet with you and, um, go from there.
Because we didn't have a time today because I called and I'm getting no answer back. If it's possible, I will make myself.
Ms. Bay, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I'm just saying if you leave the phone, the number with her and then we can get back in touch with you. Hopefully about tomorrow or, and to set up a time. Okay, but you, you saying that, you means what? Okay. Okay, you want to go back and forth, okay. I, I now just say it. Um, the accusation that was just brought in, and I do have the, the lawyer here to say that, uh, I don't have veto power. And you receive, we never adopt it. I've vetoed things before and I'm not the first mayor to do so in Saw Village. So to say that there wasn't one or all of a sudden there's no veto power now than it was veto power years ago. Several years ago. Okay, so stop and I can get that. Anyway, we're not going to go back and forth. Yes, I still have veto power.
Uh, the mayor has veto power through the, uh, law enforcement.
And that's what I was going to say. Thank you, though, you don't have to adopt it. It's truly a one done matter. Um, as far as someone asking about the VA, the VA answers to the mayor. Was the VA running day-to-day operation? Very simple. Um, and to make a comment, the board isn't legal? Okay. Appreciate that comment, but that's not true. Because if the board wasn't legal, then why are we sitting up? Okay, so, let me move on. Um, I do.
I'll keep calling every single day.
Um, the fourth officer, the mayor's report. I would like to, at this time, recommission, um, Mr. David Fields for the zoning board so he can come up, sir, and take the oath.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Uh, your.
Excuse me, what, what do you, what do you?
I'm asking.
Because you interrupted, I get rid of swearing.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, I have a question about this, um.
About what?
What you're going to do. This says that you're not, this doesn't state that you're going to swear anyone in. This states recommend that David Fields be recommissioned to serve on the zoning board of appeals. It doesn't say that he's going to be sworn in today or any of that. It says that you are going to recommend that. You have to bring this through committee, uh, Mr. Mayor. If this is what you're, if, if you're, to, if you, you say you're recommending it. And, and, and so I'm just saying, according to, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, according to the agenda, he cannot be sworn in this evening. He cannot be, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You're interrupting me again, sir. You can't interrupt it while I'm speaking, sir. Mr. Mayor, may I please continue? Thank you, sir. Mr. Fields cannot be recommended. That is not on this agenda. I mean, he cannot be sworn in. It is not on the agenda for swearing in. And therefore that cannot take place. It is not on the agenda. Now, if you recommend that, then you can recommend it and we can discuss what we need to discuss through committee on next Tuesday, sir.
Thanks for your comment. Madam Pledge, would you please?
Uh, I appeal the mayor's decision, attorney. I appeal the mayor's decision to do a swearing in and it is not a part of our agenda. I appeal his decision. I appeal his decision to do a swearing because it is not on our agenda. It is not stating and I appeal his decision to make this verdict.
So there's nothing to, technically, there's nothing to appeal right now, um.
I appeal his decision to move forward in making a swearing in and it is not on the agenda to do so, attorney.
So what the, what, what you, what the mayor could do is make a motion to amend the agenda on its face if, um,
Okay.
if this was a typographical error, um, rather than recommend that Mr. Fields be recommissioned, it's that just recommission Mr. Fields to serve on the zoning board of appeals.
And then, and then we have to vote on it?
Yes, then you would have to vote on it.
Okay, thank you, sir. So what is it that the mayor wants to do, sir? Because it can't be sworn in at, uh, uh, under these circumstances.
He's operating the motions, yes.
He, he, again, is not on the agenda. It is not on the agenda. We're not going to swear anyone in. It is not on the agenda to do a swearing or to recommission or any of that. It's a recommendation. And that is done through committee, not through a board meeting. This is our action items. This is not an action item and so therefore it cannot take place. It's a recommendation.
So, Clerk Pruitt, is it my understanding that he, he's already been, this is just a, this is just a ceremonial.
No, sorry.
He is already, he already.
But his commission has ended, uh, attorney. His commission has ended. That is the reason why he have to be recommissioned. So again, again. Uh, this is.
Please let the attorney finish his conversation.
So Clerk, Clerk Pruitt, since this is a, a ceremonial, like strictly a ceremonial function, it's already has legal effect. You don't necessarily have to do it right now in, in this public setting. We can do it. We can do it afterwards. We could do it, we could take a recess and, and do it and there wouldn't have to be, we wouldn't have to deal with any motions or.
This, excuse me, attorney.
Trustee, would you please let it finish?
He's finished. That's enough. He was talking, he was done. Excuse me, okay. Uh, audience, this is an illegal procedure. There is no agenda item to swear anyone in. There's just a recommendation. So you see how the clerk, the mayor, and these people are breaking the law?
There you go. There you go. Thank you. No, they don't, no, they don't. She out of order. She out of order.
Thanks.
I will continue to keep doing it if you don't want to listen to, to the chair. If you want to disrespect.
The chair has to follow the agenda.
If you want to disrespect the chair, yes, I would, and I will. Until you decide you want to listen. If you don't want to, we'll be here all night. So I'm just saying, if you want to keep interrupting me, I'm beginning to. Yes, you are, you're doing it now. You're doing, oh, you're doing it now. So we're going to move forward. I'm going, then, then don't stand for it. Then, no, you're not, you're not, you're not continuing.
Ring them through committee, sir.
No, no.
Because that's your recommendation.
No, no.
Mic is off.
He's already commissioned and he won't continue.
No, he is signed, his commission has signed. And it's time to be recommissioned. And he's assigned. And he has to be voted in by the trustees and that has to come each committee because we have questions. Now, we're going to do this properly and correctly and the mayor's not going to usurp the, the, uh, uh, trustees.
You serve.
Authority. Ring it. Do what you say. He said, okay, yes, we accept your permission.
I'm sorry, Mr. Uh, Fields. It's, it's, it's really embarrassing, but that, I see that's what they feel like they want to do. So with that being said, you were and still are the commissioner. We're just recommissioning you because you were already commissioned. So we're just recommissioning you. We'll do it at another time at another place, irregardless of what they feel. But as I said before, we're just, then if I'm breaking the lawsuit.
We have to vote. Audience, residents, we have to vote on his recommission. If the trustee is not called under recommission, he is not recommissioned. So the mayor is telling you guys they're going to give you someone without the trustees voting and that.
Are you, are you done? Are you done? Are you done? Oh, you asked for it. You asked for it to have a bottom up for real. You asked for the, um, the, um, You asked for the, uh, the, uh, the agenda brought up for a reason, obviously, you must have to go somewhere, so you keep your. So, what I'm trying to say is, Mr. Fields, we'll take care of it another time, because it seems like that's what they're trying to do, but that's okay. And I said before, this is, the lecture, this is just shows me exactly what's going on, but we're trying to do and take care of it. So, no, I'm gonna take me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue with what I have to say about my report. Um. I just wanted to thank each and every person that came out Saturday to help, to give advice. Um, they came outside there for the corner of dog ropes. Um, it was really, really, um, very enlightening, enlightening. We had about four hundred people there. If you continue to talk, ma'am, I would ask you to leave. I say that many times. If you're gonna disrupt this meeting, please do it outside the door. Thank you. Um, there was, uh, the, um, helicopter keg, um, and then the, uh, Jesse White Tumbers. And as I stated, and it was, and then the, I just want to say for the, with the junior I R O T C, we had about twenty-five, thirty of those young men and women that came out and volunteered, and helped us in every facet that we needed, even helped clean up at the end. So, I just want to say thank you to them, yeah. Thank you, man. They are, they really helped, and we wouldn't be able to do, uh, be that much of a success if it wasn't for them, but it was really nice. And those that came out to help work, I appreciate that. Those electric officials that helped, they came out to work. You know, other than just come out and, but this was for the village. It wasn't for me, it wasn't for, uh, I probably, just, this was for people to come out. You don't have your own meeting, or what?
No, Mr. Mayor, I.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking now.
Mr. Mayor, you're, you're, I, I have to say this.
No, you don't.
We moved the business directly after public comments, sir.
Okay.
So, we're not supposed, we're not supposed to be on reports right now.
I got off track.
I just want to make sure we get back on track.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to say that also, um, next year, we're gonna make a couple of changes, but.
I'll follow the change.
Next year, we're gonna make a couple of changes, but, um, all in all, I think it was very nice, very good. It did rain. Some people left, but you missed the, um, Jesse White Tumbers, because it did rain right before they came, and I thought it was gonna be a problem, but thanks to the fire department, they had the big, um, fan out there, and they, uh, helped dry off the, um, concrete and asphalt that was out there. They need that thing at the end of the day. I, I also want to say I apologize, um, the unit is not operating. We're gonna get on that to, uh, tomorrow. It just went out, and we're gonna find out tomorrow, bring someone there to find out why it's still spitting, and it's not just the nearest, and the whole village off. So, but again, thank you so much. Hope you enjoyed yourself. Um, we, we had five hundred years of porn, I think y'all went, and we had three hundred hot dogs, and I think we upgraded all those too. So, thanks for everyone that came out to have fun, and came out to have fun. All right, I'm gonna go to item ten B. I'll ask for a motion to, ten A, I'm sorry. Ten A one. A motion to approve transfer of the payroll accounts payable distribution in a combined amount of eight hundred and forty-five thousand. Two hundred and seventy-seven thousand thirty, sir.
So, move.
Second.
Hi.
It was moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, and seconded by trustee Carter. I'm ready for it.
Yes, I motion to amend that motion to postpone the accounts payable to table and postpone accounts payable to be brought into committee along with the director of finance, the VA, also the chairman, the, the chair, uh, person, Mr. Eugene Carter, uh, finance, and the mayor in committee on Tuesday. So, I motion.
So, first, we have to have a, um, a vote on the motion that, so there's a motion pending to pay the bills. So, we have to, if there's no other discussion, then the clerk would call a roll.
Okay, so you're saying that, um, in order to make that motion, they have, did they have to vote on the first one?
Procedurally, we have to vote on the first motion before any other motions can be brought.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor to pay eight forty-five, two seventy-seven thirty. Yeah, mayor, motion in a second. I know, they had a motion in a second. Trustee Carter. Uh, madam, could you please call it?
Trustee Cohen?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee William?
No.
Trustee Har?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Okay, the motion failed? Okay. So, you don't want to pay, 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 I mean, you don't want to pay, uh, accounts payable? Then they went to white papers. They didn't get nobody to work. They couldn't, nobody could work for free.
They don't care. It doesn't affect them.
All right.
I motion.
We've paid over eight hundred thousand dollars in the last two accounts payable. We have no financial reports. We have nothing to say how much money we working with. We just want to know where we getting money to pay these bills. That's why we're asking to discuss it.
Okay, uh, so, have you made the motion, or you just, what are you doing?
We're making a motion.
That's not a motion you asked. That's not a motion.
I made a motion. I made a motion.
Okay, you, you, what is your, okay, what is your motion?
My motion is to, uh, table.
You know, you, you already voted not to pay accounts payable, and you can't, you just made, you just made a motion to table. I'm not sorry, not to table, but not to pay.
I'm making a motion to rule accounts payable to Tuesday's committee meeting for discussion.
We don't vote on Tuesday committee.
I just said I'm making a motion to rule accounts payable to committee on Tuesday for a discussion. I'm asking that director of finance, Ms. Renee, is present. The village administrator, Mr. Kenneth Johnson, is present. The mayor, which should be present, and also Mr. Eugene Carter, who is the finance chair. I'm asking those department heads to be present to discuss the financial matters of the AP on Tuesday at the committee of the whole meeting. So that we can get questions answered, so we can go ahead and pay our accounts payable. But we have questions, sir. So, we want to discuss those questions in committee, and that's my motion.
Okay. Well, I didn't, I didn't ask anything, man. Well, that's, that's what we got. That's what we got. That's what I'm dealing with. No, that's what they tried to do, but anyway. So, if I'm understanding, if I'm understanding this correctly. The whole time, I don't have any words. I said that one word. I didn't say a word when I was talking. The whole time. As soon as I said something, you have to talk to this. Okay, so there's a motion to, we already made the motion not to pay accounts payable, which you have some of these bills that everyone wants to know why we can't get business to come out to the village. So, now, there's a motion on the floor to discuss the accounts payable next Tuesday, which means that's another week before we pay anything. And then I guess vote on it the following Tuesday. So, that'd be a whole, two more weeks from today, that these bills that we have right here, uh, won't get paid. And, um, some of these bills, if you have a chance to look through them, are dated. So, that's the motion that's on the floor in a second. So, uh.
No.
There's a discussion, there's no discussion. There is a discussion.
Oh, I, 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 okay, excuse me. If you have a question?
Yeah, trustee Johnson.
Okay, trustee.
Why can't my fellow board members still pay the bills and still just ask to discuss this on Tuesday's committee? Why should the council be held up? Because y'all want to discuss it. Why can't you just pass it, pay the bills, and we don't lose any vendors? The village still has to run. That's what y'all fail to forget.
Okay, trustee, um, ma'am.
Thank you for your comment, trustee Johnson. We're not failing to forget that. We've got bills on this accounts payable that are due from January two thousand twenty-three with County Department of Public Health. We have other bills on this accounts payable from two thousand twenty-three. We have asked for copies of the invoices, and we're not getting them. I asked for copies yesterday, and today, can I please come and see these invoices before I am expected to pay out eight hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money? In particular, I asked for the invoice for AIC, which is eighty-three thousand dollars. And when they brought their bid in, they said our annual, their annual fee would be one hundred thousand dollars. And we're already paying them, what, eighty-three thousand for this month alone? Can I please see that invoice, I asked? I got no response. I got no return email. I got no invoice in my box. Number two, they won't let us even make copies of the invoices. They won't let us see them for a second. Then we have to just look over them quickly and act like we're just, whoo. I'm a Salt Village trustee. When I ask for an invoice before I'm gonna be approving the payment, I expect to see it. And when there's a, a person who comes and presents a bid for a hundred thousand dollars, how do you give me an invoice three months later for eighty-three thousand, when you've already been paid for three or four months already? I guarantee you, they've exceeded their hundred thousand within three or four months, and we still have eight months to go in the year. Yes, sir. Yes, we have looked at the accounts payable. We are looking for an H R report that is accurate. Every once in a while, bills come up on the H R report that are a hundred and fifty-one days past due, that we've never seen before. There are people that appear on an H R report one week and don't appear on an H R report two weeks later. How do you have an H R report that floats? One day I'm here, and the next day I come downstream, and I never get. This, we don't know who's getting paid. We don't know when we approved your accounts payable, who's actually getting a check? People are telling me that they still haven't gotten their check when we approved payables two weeks ago, a month ago. Who knows what happens once we approve accounts payable? We cannot approve eight hundred thousand dollars worth of accounts payable without some financial information. I asked for bank statements from March through present. I didn't get them. I did a FOIA for bank statements from March through present. I didn't get them. I didn't get them. I didn't get a response, and I'm not going to get them. I just didn't get them. So, I filed with the Attorney General. Yes, I did, finally. A trustee has to file with the Attorney General to get answers on a bank statement. I want to see where the money is. I want to see the checks that have been paid. Just because we approve accounts payable, doesn't mean the people are getting paid. So, we're not trying to not pay the vendors. The finance department needs to give us the information we need so we can make intelligent decisions to spend your money. So, for a trustee to say, oh, attorney, we're not looking, I see that to this, and I comment every minute, and how this H R report is ridiculous and false. I want an H R report with every single invoice that's in that office. I don't want to see today, there's a H R report. Next week, it's not on the H R report. So, we need to get it paid. It just got kicked to the side. And one that I have been, one, there's two attorneys I have been watching, they've been kicked to the side, in particular. So, I do watch the attorney, though, and there's no reason, if we've got six million dollars in the bank, that we were told two weeks ago, why we still have invoices from January, February, March, April, May, June of two thousand twenty-three.
All right, there's a motion. I have a question. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say this. And I, and I, I'm hoping that you'll understand. If it gets to the point where you don't want to listen when the chair says something, then we will adjourn the meeting, go move to recess. Trustee, um, attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, we want to say that all of us have been asking and requesting appointments with the village administrator, Mr. Kenneth Johnson. We've also been asking for appointments with the director of finance, Ms. Renee Lewis, uh, to go over these vendor charges. And again, as, to reiterate what trustee William said, we're not getting any responses. We also have a ordinance. There is a village code and a law of Salt Village that no vendor is to be paid unless they submit invoices to the trustees. So, we are not denying any payment. It is not a denial. It is a delay. And if these vendors, and if the finance director, Ms. Lewis, and the VA, Mr. Johnson, does not make sure that they cooperate cohesively with the board of trustees, then vendor payments will be delayed. Because again, we're at eight hundred, almost a million dollars, and we have no clue where the money is coming from. We have no clue what is in these bank accounts. We have ex-trustees who, who, uh, there's an ex-trustee here now who question our motives. And our motives are to make sure that our taxpaying dollars, because I am too a resident, that our taxpaying dollars are used responsibly, that they are used correctly, and that there is no foul play. And there has to be some type of foul play going on here, because the village administrator and the director of finance refuses to work with the board of trustees to give us what we are legally supposed to have on a weekly, monthly basis. And we are going through, jumping through hoops trying to get them, just like the residents out here are jumping through hoops trying to find out why their water bills are off. Yet, our village administrator and our director of finance does not answer these questions. So, again, if you want these bills paid, then give us what we're asking for, and that is a meeting. Bring forth the accounts payable on Tuesday so we can discuss it as a family, as a village. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Do you have some suggestions? Trustee Carter? You have anything? Um. I appreciate what you guys are saying. Some of that you said is not true, but it sounds a bit. So, bottom line is you're not paying bills today. Bottom line is you feel that you have not had a chance to come look at. Bottom line, you're not going to take bills out of the office and go somewhere and, um, make, uh, copies up on user phone or whatever. You're gonna look at the bills in front of someone. So, yes, yes. So, if you don't want to pay these bills today, fine, we will let the vendors know that they didn't pay it once again. And the untruth thing that you stated is, and it was stated, that the AIC, the eighty-three thousand dollars is separate. Please, why don't you say something? Please, say it all. That was the equipment that was voted on by this board for the police department and for Salt Village, uh, building.
Give me an invoice that shows.
I'm not talking.
Give me an invoice.
When you were talking.
Mr. Mayor.
When you were talking. Trustee, when you were talking, why, why do you guys want to continue just, to just talk when you want to? I don't talk when y'all saying something. I don't talk when you say something. I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to. If you do again, I'm asking for recess. So, I guess you want to do that. What'd you say? What'd you say? No, go ahead. Yes, you did. Yes, you, you were talking. I asked for a recess. I, I asked for most of.
Uh, excuse me, I appeal the mayor's, I appeal the mayor's decision for a recess. I appeal the mayor's recess. I appeal the mayor's recess.
We're gonna have ten minutes recess.
I appeal the mayor's recess. If you leave, if you leave, I appeal, attorney, I appeal the mayor's recess. We don't need. I request a recess.
Shut off. And next time, you'll, you'll, you'll listen.
We have, we have a motion on the floor, a motion to appeal the mayor's recess in just a second. Please, now please, everyone.
Take a recess.
I feel.
They don't, they, they don't want to listen. I asked to be quiet. I asked to be quiet. Only way I know.
I appeal.
I'm not going back to, I'm not going. Blue is the flag, you're not going to try to go. I, 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 I kind of.
Lawyer, they're needing to take a motion.
Lawyer.
For seconded for hipper.
Can you hear the lawyer?
I'm not turning back on it until you show some kind of respect, and you're not doing it.
I, I have a motion.
No, there's no motion on the floor. You're in recess.
No, I appeal the motion to recess. Mayor, you know how this works? Stop spitting.
You do that.
Stop doing that there, sir.
No, but then, what is that about?
There's a motion in a second on the floor.
No, well, guess what? We're in recess.
There's, there's no recess. Okay, if there's recess, then I'm gonna motion to have a mayor protest and a clerk protesting. Because there, I appeal and there's a motion in a second. You all look what the mayor is doing. There's a motion in a second on the floor and that's the whole fault. There is no recess. There's an appeal. Attorney, please, please, it's my.
Attorney.
Uh, this is our attorney.
No, really?
This is, this is a corporate attorney. And we're the corporate authorities. So he's definitely our attorney. Uh, attorney, there's a motion in a second on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay, then I, I motion to, yeah, we losing our time. I motion, we are, we, we are, we are, we are pointing at mayor protest, trustee, um, call. And we want to take a vote.
You got to deal with this.
Okay, I, our, uh, trustee, uh, as the clerk protests and we're on the test.
Motion on the floor was a motion.
And I'm, I'm, but they have to, you know, so, attorney. Look, he pushed me. I'm next to you. They don't pay. You should have watched how this is.
Nobody's letting me talk. Every time that I change your name, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not at anybody's side. You know, I want to do, I want to get through this meeting. So, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not trying to stop.
He's got his bill on the front.
What he's saying is that the mayor and the clerk and the trustee left without a problem in this world. Stop. Let's put her short away. Let's just get this back on track.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Trustee said, he's right there.
I'm not over time. He passed a motion. He passed a motion. This is not a, this is not a, this is not a, this is not a. Go ahead, sir. Get some, call the attorney. I want a motion recess.
They're making now, they're making now. They're making now. Thank you very much. Don't go when you get dirty, try to speak. You have my microphone, you show up. Hey, you keep talking.
The mayor, he's coming off the microphone. We got, we got wrong terms, Lord have mercy on Jesus.
Oh, God, right, right.
Now, do you all see what just happened?
You are wrong.
They called for recess.
She got rolled, cause she got rolled, but, yeah, roll. Right now, it's not for you to say anything. Okay, so this right, you think it's gonna fail on the floor?
I love you very much. I love you, but I need to. It's my job. I love it, but I need to.
Good job, you have a good job. Go, go, my job. Go to your job.
There was not a proper recess. The, the recess was a.
I'm asking the, um, board to come back for order.
There was not a proper attorney, attorney. There was not a proper recess. How, how?
Okay, so, so there was a motion pending. There was a motion pending for recess. There was, it was never voted on. There was no discussion over it. It was just, we, we just blew right through that. Um, so, if that motion is still going to go forward, we could have a vote on it. But since we're all back here now, probably would behoove us to withdraw the motion and let's just move forward with the business, please.
You, you see the game?
And stop talking over one another. The mayor, the mayor runs the meeting. The mayor runs the meeting. Stop talking over him.
You see the game?
Trust me, I do want to.
Do you see? You see the game?
What does that mean when you do that? What does that mean when you do that?
I, I'm, I'm.
Talk to my hand?
No, I want to be, I'm raising my hand to be recognized. I'm raising my hand.
I am recognizing you right now.
Why?
Because you've been disrupting that.
I'm not being disruptive. I have a question.
Again, and you still talk.
I still have, I still have raised my hand, sir.
Nope. Nope. That's a shame. You all want to say, but then again, that's what you want to do. You're trying to show people just how, how we are, but that's okay. I'm gonna break, I'm asking, I'm calling this back to our order. The next item. Y'all have a meeting down there? Okay, um, the next item is petition of agreement. I want to make a, I, I'm sorry. I'll ask for a motion to approve referring to selling the property. And the property being St. James, I'd advise this community, I'm sorry, to, um, the community decided to a district and to the zoning board for appeals for zoning requirements. Then we put this and give this to the zoning board, but then have the zoning board a, uh, meeting. I'll ask for a motion.
So hold.
Second. Who's that second? Okay, it was moved by trustee Johnson, taken by trustee Carter. Any questions? That's clear. I, what'd he say? I, what'd he doing? Is that, do y'all have, the, I did, is that, is it, you got your agenda? You should have got your agenda.
No, I, I.
The motion is on the floor.
But there's a discussion.
We just had a discussion there, please.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor Verge, there's a motion.
There's that, okay, discussion, discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, what's your discussion? What's your question? What's your question?
Uh, my, my point that I want to make is that we do not know who the zoning board is. On last week, we was in the meeting and we were told that there were three people on the zoning board. Now, from my understanding, the, Mr. Point Dexter, who was the president, supposedly is no longer the president. So before we move, before we move on this motion,
Who told you that?
We want to bring this back to committee. And we're asking that the president of the zoning board and all members of the zoning board be present in committee so we can know who our zoning board is and who's making decisions to zone our properties, our businesses. And so we have to bring it back to committee.
That's your question. Anyone else have a question? There's a motion.
That's my mo.
That's your question?
That's my motion.
That's not a motion. There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, well, we both did. I'll, I'll do my second one.
Okay, but then.
Because we, we need to know who our.
No, no, you had, you had a chance to ask each question.
We need to know who our zoning board is.
There's, there's the other question. That's what we, please, please.
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just.
I just asked.
I was just waiting for the clearance.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Hmm.
I agree with trustee Burns as far as bringing you, this is a big.
He's not talking over one another. Please.
Thank you, attorney. When light speaks, everybody else should be quiet, correct? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I agree with trustee Burns because we don't even know who the zoning board is, what their qualifications are.
What?
Mr. Mayor, you interrupted me again.
I asked you, what do you mean qualifications?
Okay, so do we know which, trustee Burns' question is very valid. What you're saying is, do we know who's on the zoning board? I do not. It's been many years since we've seen who, who was on the zoning board. And when you bring, m, m, Ms. Madam Clerk, Ms. Madam, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk. I said, I agree with trustee Burns. What is wrong with bringing the zoning board and the president to a committee meeting to meet them? Because when I talk about qualifications, before somebody can make a ruling on whether or not something should be done, they should have proper training or background on being that person that should be able to make that recommendation. That's all I'm saying. When a trustee has a request, why, we can't honor it as a request. What's wrong with bringing it to committee?
We didn't do that when we had, uh, vote, uh, something. But, um, what I'm trying to say is, and it's, as you all know.
I don't know. I don't know, my.
As you all know, the difference is time. So. So you want to delay this, even though we met with them, they came last week. They, heck. Even though they came last week and they explained to you what they were trying to do, now it looks like a stall pack. Okay, so, you don't want to do, you don't want, uh, to vote on this tonight? You wanted to delay that too? You wanted to delay everything? You're not gonna, as long as I'm there, you're not gonna break the, uh, bill down.
You kind of cut me off, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't saying I wanted to delay this. I don't see the problem with bringing the zoning board to the committee to discuss them.
Go to the zoning board, it's gonna be one, two, as we, uh, give this to them, they'll, it will happen. They don't.
So you're not gonna bring the zoning board to the committee?
They don't have a meeting. They don't have a meeting until they bring something like this together. There is no meeting. And as you know already, you've been, uh, voting for, for, uh, a while, eh? Trustee, you already know, the zoning board does not convene unless they have a meeting.
That's, they need to. That's all.
Trustee, um, uh, got us, what, yeah, yeah.
I recall, I think it was last month, um, do you recall, it was last month, Madam Clerk, that you swore the zoning board in front of the whole residence and our board? So I see why they're saying they don't know who the zoning board is.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to not vote, to, to, to not approve the result of passing this order to the zoning board. And what, and they voted, and by the way, Mr. Point Dexter, not the president, he was the chair. It's a difference. And, um, and then, and, um, the school district has asked to have this because I guess they, they, they need to get their funding together in time of the matter. But they can't get anything done until it's been reassigned, as was explained last Tuesday. So now, obviously, you want to have another week to, to look it over for whatever reason. Because every time I ask for a reason, I, I don't get it. You just want to do it. So, the motion on the floor, again, is that we hold and don't vote on this until. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just wanting to ask you all, now you can ask.
Mayor, I also want to point out that the contract, speaking with Administrator Johnson, is contingent upon, uh, receiving the, uh, the zoning, um, the zoning change. So, uh, if the motion fails and it isn't approved, uh, then that, the contract is at risk of, um, of not being fulfilled either.
So, okay, well, there's a motion on the floor to delay this one more, uh, what to talk about next week and vote on the following week, because next week is a committee.
And to have the zoning board present.
So.
And to have the zoning board present.
That, so you may want to consider if, if the votes are, i- if you're, if we're concerned about losing the contract and that, that being an issue, um, maybe may want to table this vote then instead of having it.
Table it, when I've asked for a motion to accept their proposal, their being the, uh, school district proposal, and then we would still have to, because it wasn't reassigned with a special use, then they would have, do have to convene a, uh, zoning board meeting where the zoning board were discussing and they would ask questions about the audience. I don't know if any of these questions, there've been the zoning board being, I think, most of, asked, if he had one, um, about the, um, um, farm that's over there in one of the churches. So, we voted on that to, or never thought of also for a, uh, zoning board.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the, uh, attorney a question?
I'm just. You can, I can, yeah. I'm just saying that if you want to, the motion on the floor is to table this and, uh, bring it back at the committee and the hold next week.
With the zoning board present, the motion on. So you, you are not to take.
Right. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. There's a motion on the floor to approve it. Okay, then there's a motion on the floor to approve it. That's the question there, so, it was moved by.
It was moved by Johnson.
Okay.
So that motion now is open for discussion, right?
Well, it, okay, okay, there's, there's no discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted, uh, attorney, to reiterate what you just said about how important passing this particular motion is. You said that the recommendation to the zoning board must be approved to, that must be approved or the zoning recommendation to come back to the board must be approved. What is the contract, what's contingent? You, you said something is contingent about what this board does.
It would, it would be contingent upon the property receiving the special use permit that, that it's seeking.
Which can't be done until the entire zoning board, the entire zoning process is completed.
Correct.
So the contract is on hold until the entire zoning process is completed, completed. Trustee Burns is asking, can we meet with the, uh, zoning board next week? So we, okay, now I understand.
There are, you know, if, if you ever, you know, bought and sold property, you know that there, there's, there are timing issues that go along with all the, with, with the financing. So, it, for, for a, a motion such as this, I understand every, we have our allegiances one way or the other that really would, would do no, no, no harm to the village to, to vote against this motion. Regardless of what your, where your allegiances lie, and there, there's no reason to vote against this motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, you put this, it's wrong, meaning it's wrong, which is true. It's one deep parliamentary procedure. The, you can only speak on the same topic twice.
Okay, I have, uh, no, this is not my third time. I only spoke once. I brought the motion.
Okay, this is your second time.
Okay, so I, I.
What do you have to say?
Okay, so what I have to say is, again, they are coming to the trustees to ask us to vote on something and we haven't even, don't even know who our zoning board is. So, again, bring the zoning board to committee so that we will know who our zoners are. Now, what is, what is the harm in bringing the zoning board to the committee? Again, why should we as trustees keep voting on anything in this village and we don't know anything or the people who's doing these jobs? I know that the contract has already been signed and I already know that they're fine. And I do also know that there's no problem and there will be no delay. We're asking to bring the zoning board to committee before the trustees. We have questions for our zoning board. Now, how can we as trustees pass anything when we have questions for our zoning board? So what is the harm in bringing the zoning board to committee? So the trustees can ask questions for a deal that's this important. And if it's this important and we have questions, then I, I, they should bring the zoning board to committee so that the trustees can ask the questions that we need answered. Just like the trustees need to have questions answered for accounts payable. Bring it to committee. It's no big deal.
Nope.
We're making a mountain out of a memorial. Just bring it to committee.
Yes, Mr., yes, this is my second time. Mr. Mayor, I see this as two separate issues. I see the first thing is a vote to approve bringing this move to the zoning board for a recommendation. That's one, that's one motion. I see a second motion that is gonna come on the floor about asking that the zoning board come to the committee meeting to meet the zoning board and to, to, to interview them, basically, or at least find out exactly what their qualifications are. What I would like to do, and this is just me personally, is I would like to follow through on the motion to approve the, um, bringing it to the zoning board. But I would like the zoning board to come next week to just, to meet with the trustees and that the, the zoning board cannot meet anyway until after the trustees meet in committee because there's a timeframe on when they have to set up the zoning meeting. So two things can be done here. We can move it to the zoning board and then we. We can move it to the zoning board and then we can meet the zoning board, two separate motions, that's the way I see it.
Okay, but that's not the way it's written, trustee.
Trustee, please.
I have my hand up.
You're done, we are done with this part.
Okay, see, and that, and that's the problem. This is, this is discussion, we are discussing. First of all, this, this, the way, the way that is written there, we can't.
No, you're, you're, no, wait, no, you're not going mad. You're not going mad before.
My boy has to be.
Well, okay, this, this is motion on the floor. You know, brother, what you understand, you do. Maybe you, you know, if you want to be mad, run for it, but don't sit here and take over.
Trustee, you're all in the whole.
Okay, I didn't, you still have.
It has to be discussed because it's not.
You don't want to ask, can you, can you, can you, um, fast track the meeting? So I got to get, but, no.
I'm not hurting you right now.
Thank you.
You said you want to discuss, you thought so much, so obviously you need. Have a meeting with the meeting. Why are you discussing, why are you discussing, this is what you're doing, you're about to talk. Why are you discussing?
Mr. Mayor, may I call?
I can't, I can't, I can't.
Trustees, the question on the floor is whether or not to refer to the zoning board the issue of the zoning. It's not giving them any rights or anything. We are just referring the matter to the, the commission.
And that's all it is, that's all.
We're just referring to the commission, being the commission.
Refer to that.
Who then meet to their investigation and then they will come back to the board of trustees and make a recommendation. That's when you actually vote. That's the process, people. We're making it harder than it has to be. We, all, all we want to do is say, we can give the zoning board this piece of paper and let them get to work on it. After they get to work on it, they come back to you and make a recommendation to you. And then you both, whether or not the area can be rezoned or not. That's it, not by the side. That's all.
All right, there's a motion on the floor on the second, that vote is complete.
Trustee Satt.
Turn your mic up.
The mic is off.
Trustee Satt. Trustee Williams.
He's voting out the original motion, yes.
To refer to the zoning board. Trustee Burns.
No.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Cohen.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Motion here.
Motion to carry, uh, will be, will be referring to the zoning board, there was less than one win. The zoning board meeting will take place and, uh, they have to put it out in the paper. All right, moving on.
There was another motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor, that was moved by trustee Burns, seconded by trustee Williams. And that was to invite the zoning board of appeals commissioners to a committee meeting so that they can get a chance to meet them.
All right, have those, uh, I, the question I have is that is this. I have no problem with them coming in, but I do have a problem with them being browned. If that happens, then they start browning the, the people who, um, are volunteers for, for the village. If they start doing that, I, I think myself will cut it off. They're not good for that. They, they need to tell you who they are and they live in the village where they, where they live. But to ask for credentials, there's no credentials to be trustee, I mean, you have to live here. So nobody ready, you or whatever, these people are being, are volunteers. So if, if you're gonna say that they shouldn't be on the board because of what? That's one thing I'm trying to, I'm gonna make that, put that on the record. All right, the next item.
Uh, we have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it moved by trustee who?
Burns.
Seconded by trustee Williams?
Yes.
Any questions on that?
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
No.
Trustee Cohen.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Satt.
Yes.
Motion to carry, I have this one here, agenda's next week, those that get it, okay.
I think I just contacted the bottom, there's nothing to, you know, say, I'm not coming to you. For them to ask me. I'm involved in cheese, yeah, I ain't got, I ain't got it. Get there. She know who we are.
Go ahead, go ahead and say it, Mr. Park.
Yeah, she know who we are and she know what we do. I was actually, actually put on there, but there, hey, I wanted to put on there, but there, but she know that.
I'm just, I'm informing the board that I've detailed the message on the motion to approve resolution to authorize professional services agreement with down house for the office of inspector general for the village of South Village. And. And the veto message to the village, uh, South Village Board of Trustees, a motion to override the AIC technology recommendation proposal to upgrade the village network and terminate AIC contract effects since September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. So, uh, I'm entering these, and I'm giving it to the trustees as a agreement. I didn't, I didn't ask for, I didn't ask for a question. Okay, well, then I'm just saying, I just, what I, but then you had a veto.
When you present the vetoes, uh, Mr. Attorney, are we allowed to speak on the vetoes?
Uh, no.
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 This is the veto, who am I saying?
That we will be overriding these.
And also I just want to make it for the record, until this is taken care of, if everything is taken care of. I. Until this is taken care of, everything has been taken care of, there will be no, there will be no admittance of anyone from OIG into the village, um.
You say until something's taken care of?
Yeah, because I, I said this kind of report, so until that takes care of.
Until, I'm not sure.
Until, until, I, I'm not, I'm not, you don't have the right to, uh, appoint or hire. The board will be done. Okay, well, like I said, that's why I said until this is taken care of. So I don't know, I'm just saying that now, so I'm hoping that they'll show up tomorrow, next week or whatever case they're being into the course. Be that what, what they've done is be a yes or no. And without me, if you, if you come in looking at the records, come in looking at, uh, anything, any, uh, important information going back or anything to that nature. I'm saying this now, hoping that, that people that's involved will listen to that and not try to sneak in or try to push their way through, but I'm saying this now that it's not gonna be that. Um. Back to reports of officers, uh, matter of.
Uh, what, are we done with, are we done with? Cinderella?
The veto with the veto, there's no, there's no, so, so, I've done, I've done this before. Uh, matter of.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, last week, under your mayor's report, you spoke on campaigning. You spoke on the need for all trustees to make a come together. You didn't say come right out, but we definitely needed to come together, um, to work together. And, and, and I believe that, and I believe that in all honesty. That did not last even a week and our, and it's not just our trustees. It's some of our residents as well, and I need to call you on it, okay? First, I want to give you just a little bit of knowledge. The village clerk functions as the local election official, okay? In that vein, I am responsible for voter registration. I'm responsible for that. The Cook County Clerk's Office contacts me, sends me the paperwork. I have to take a special oath to be a deputy register and I'm not patting myself on the back, okay? But I'm giving you that information in case some of you evidently do not know that you know how you have roles and responsibilities or you have a job to do. Getting people registered to vote is my job. It's one of my jobs. I do more than just take minutes like other people think. But somebody sent this to me and, and it was disturbing, but then it got worse because this commentary stated that I took it upon myself to add a voter registration booth out at the Corny Dog Roast. Now, we had more than thirty vendors out there, okay? It was well attended. Why couldn't the village clerk have a table where she could get people registered? And thankfully, I got seven individuals registered, yes. And then I gave another three or four the actual mail-in piece because they didn't have their ID. That would have been that number of people that we didn't have. So don't be ugly. And let me share something else with whoever wrote this. I had to bring my own table. Other people had their tables set up for them already, but no, I came prepared just in case. I brought my own table, own tablecloth, own everything. I also passed out other information and literature dealing with elections, okay? And I'm going to keep doing it. But then, that's not all. Right a day or so after that, yesterday in fact, I get an email from the Cook County Clerk's Office, the person that's over elections. They received a report that when I was out there getting people to sign up to register vote, they claimed that I was circulating my petitions. People, I know that, I would never do that. I would never do that. And so then I had to stop what I was doing, a major foyer request to go and highlight every activity that I've done toward voter registration. That that I've done here, that that I've done at National Night Out, that that I've done in Park Forest, that that I did just this past Sunday in all of that heat. I was out there giving education, okay? In Country Club Hills. It's my life during this period of time. So, yeah, I'm gonna take it upon myself, Mr. Mayor, to ingratiate myself whenever, wherever I can because the November fifth election is very important, very. When I was in Park Forest, I got six youngsters who were not quite eighteen to get registered. Believe me, people, it's not easy. Because you have some people who, they don't want to vote, they never voted, they twenty-seven, they forty-seven, they sixty, and they're accustomed to not voting and they're turned off by it. So, I, I'd be talking up a storm, I'm afraid. Let me move on because I don't want to dwell in the negativity, but I need to just appeal to each one of you. Stop it, just stop it. And let's act as if we are a village that wants to contribute to our society. We want to vote, we want others to vote, we want all of that. So don't be ugly and nasty. Now, I'm gonna move on to something a little bit more pleasant. Uh, the Violence Prevention Coordinator, Coordinating Council, for which South Village is one of the three villages, they had their monthly meeting this morning and it was action-packed. It was so many resources there, it, it, it's amazing. But I thought that there was a couple that I wanted to share with you. And one of them, there's a crisis mobile, a mobile crisis unit. And they have them throughout the city, throughout the suburbs. The closest one to us is right in Steger, right off of Steger Road. The types of resources that this organization provide is just astronomical. They even assist with paying for housing if someone is, uh, affected by domestic or by domestic violence, whatever, I'm sorry. But they do psychiatric help, they provide the medication, they bring food to people. They just do so much and we never know which one of our valley members or friends will have a need for that resource. So that's what come, I wanted you to know that. There's a whole lot of other different campaign, oh, I talked about the campaigns. I want you to mark your calendars and that is for September the twenty-fifth, right here in the rotunda. We will have the Cook County Board review here to do their annual tax appeals workshop for us. And I would really like to see a lot of you here because I want to see a lot of you get your taxes appealed so that you're not paying so much money in taxes, Mr. Mayor.
What date is that again?
That is September the twenty-fifth. Uh, they usually get here at five, they usually, sorry, about six, six-thirty.
And all your residents should really take a debt?
Yes, exactly, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Okay, um.
In preparation for this board trustees meeting, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide the audience with the following report. I recently attended a grant workshop sponsored by the Office of Congresswoman Robin Kelly and the Office of U.S. Senator Dick Durbin at the Second Congressional District Grants Workshop. The workshop featured representatives from several agencies from around the state of Illinois and Chicagoland. It was a very, uh, worthwhile pursuit for me to go there. Um, there'll be more to come in the future on this topic as we apply for some of the many grants that were discussed and are available going forward. As I mentioned during my last report, we did have a meeting with Build Up Cook and Bureau of Asset Management. Coming out of that session, we've created an inventory priority for the various work and projects to be completed. Uh, in fact, we had the opportunity to meet with Build Up Cook on two separate initiatives in the same week to scope and schedule the replacement of sidewalks in one instance and fire hydrants respectively at specific locations in the town, of course. The sidewalk replacement project will begin before Thanksgiving and will be completed around March timeframe. And the fire hydrants are currently being replaced systematically. The new village website, as you know, is live now. I would like to invite you to spend some time navigating the site. And if you should have any requests, suggestions, or comments, please forward those directly to me. As I mentioned previously, it will be much easier, much more efficient for folks, stakeholders, to deal with the village as we will have various smartphones available and developed over time that will be on the site. It'll be much more easier for people to do business with the village online, avoiding the need to physically come to the village. That is my report.
Okay, you brought the courts, the departments, you brought the council.
I'm.
Uh, I, I have nothing to report regarding any penny litigation or corporate matters. I would just, um, personally say that to all eight of you, I really admire and appreciate how much you care about your, your village. Um, I know that it's a thankless job being a public servant. Uh, coming in here is a, you know, is, is a privilege and it's, it's awesome to be able to sit on that dais. When we are, you know, when we're going through, uh, our meetings, it is important to, I know it, it's easy to let our, our passions and tempers get inflamed, but it is important to try and remain, um, as civil as possible with one another. It's, it does promote the free flow of the media, it, it does let us move on a lot quicker. Um, so I, I apologize earlier for, if you felt that I was stalling, I was just trying to let everybody, trying to sort its way out. Um, I, I don't like inserting myself into the fray and, and, and being the loudest voice in the room because that isn't my job. Um, I'm here to just advise the board. Um, it, it's strictly in a professional capacity, I'm not, uh, I don't favor anyone more than the other. Um, I'm just a referee, uh, you know, and, and, you know, um, so some of you may not believe that, certainly don't appreciate the chuckles, um, but, uh, that is the case. So, um, I appreciate you having me out here and look forward to continuing and working with you.
Thank you. Um, Police Department, Commander Mike Hatt. Okay, Financial Director, uh, Finance Department, Financial Director, Nick Lewis.
Hey, I really don't have to report it, I just want to make this statement. So I'll open the whole accusation that the Finance Department is doing something easy, you don't have anything to hide. So if you take a look to the person to your left or right on the dial, it's all people hands up there and not clean either. So we just want to keep, put that on the record. So thank you, Trustee Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a finance report as to where we can?
She said she did.
Not a report, every, every two weeks we should have a great financial report.
Okay, um, Senior, Report for Committee and Commission, Senior Advisory Commission, uh, Committee, I'm sorry, Chairperson and the Controller.
Thank you, Mayor. Trust, Board of Trustees, Senate Clerk, Department Heads, all the other decks. Our report for this Tuesday, July twenty-third.
You want to hold, right?
Uh, my office report, you all, you all received, you all got my office report?
Yes.
Brush and Bingo are there first and third Friday, eleven to one. At the Senior Center Company, enjoy brushes and bingo with us. Also join our seniors for senior fit every Tuesday, Thursday, ten-thirty to eleven-thirty. Come out and join our seniors ages fifty and up, a great exercise class. Times for game night, uh, four P.M. to eight P.M. every second and fourth. Friday, come out, join us, the game shows, Midwest, Marco, Domino's, and more. Okay, our next casino trip is September twenty-fifth and the money is due in by September thirteen, it's forty dollars per person, includes fifteen dollar play voucher and ten dollar food voucher. Uh, contact either Deborah Conick or Carol Coleman to reserve, bus leaves at ten A.M. Our second annual senior family picnic is scheduled for September, um, Sep-, Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, ten A.M. and four P.M. in the park, behind Villa at Home. Come out, bring your grandchildren, great grandchildren, family, for a great time with our seniors, all seniors are welcome. Event will be sponsored by Eastern Stars. Also, our next committee meeting is Thursday, September twelfth, in the Senior Center, five P.M. In that conclusion, for it.
Thank you. Um, the Fire and Police Commission, Chairman Francine Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, the Police and Fire Commission report consists of that we have currently have our list posted and we have one individual on police and one individual on fire and we are beginning to recruit them. I will report information, um, to you and the board once we start the processing.
Thank you. Okay, Report to Standing Committees, uh, Budget and Finance Committee, uh, Trustee, uh, Eugene Carter.
Uh, no report right now, Nick.
Okay. Uh, Or者的View Committee, Trustee Alan Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report for tonight, however, the, uh, next board meeting, uh, committee meeting, whether, will be, uh, September the twenty, Monday, September twenty-ninth, here, here in the rotunda at seven P.M.
Okay. Public Service, Trustee Ray B. Johnson.
Our Public Service Committee next meeting will be held August twenty-ninth to Thursday at seven P.M. here in the rotunda. I'm going to thank all five committee members for coming out to the corny dog roast and assisting with, um, the residents with helping out with their service forms. We have got over twenty residents to fill out service forms. Um, we have another event that will be coming up for the children in October, which will be our Halloween event on the thirty-first, Lady Chair. More to follow at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that is my, uh, report.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Sir, uh, I wanna, um, I wanna make a correction. The, uh, the meeting will be, uh, September the thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
Which is on a Monday, again, September thirtieth, which is a Monday at seven P.M. here in the rotunda.
All right. Housing and Governmental Relations, Trustee Dan South.
Getting everyone, the Housing Committee will meet on September eleventh at six o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, Community Development, Trustee David Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee will be meeting tomorrow at eleven o'clock in the rotunda, everyone is invited to attend. Uh, the September Soft Talk articles will be, um, due Monday, September ninth, and the Soft Talk will be coming out around the fifteenth of the month. And with the vetoes that were presented earlier, we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago, the dates are, um, wrong, we don't believe that there, there is an opportunity to veto, but after further reconsideration of these vetoes, we will be placing an override in two weeks if necessary, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, Public Safety and Public Health and Safety, uh, Trustee Reese Byrne.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Public Health and Safety, uh, next committee meeting will be August thirtieth, Friday, here in the rotunda at six P.M. I also want to make a statement that, um, I have, I don't know, I don't know many of you personally, I have no personal, uh, I have no personal state as a trustee here. I'm here to do business and I'm here to do what I was elected to do. I have no, I, I have great respect for every chair that sits here and so what we have to understand is that these are serious situations that we're dealing with and everything is not going to always be peaches and cream. You're going to have debate, you're going to have discussion. We are all adults and we have all debated, we discussed, we argued with our loved ones, our families, our friends, so we can't come here and act like everything is supposed to be roses and daisies and that's not the case. When you have thousands and millions of dollars on, on the line and you're responsible for approving that type of money, it is, it is, it is, it is incumbent upon us as trustees to do our jobs and to do appropriately. The mayor, the department heads, sometimes you, sometimes other trustees may not always agree and we're going to debate that until we come to an, an understanding and an agreement, but we all have a job to do, none of this is personal, all of this is business. So the bottom line is, yes, you are going to see debates, even our attorney yelled out today and he also asked us to be civil, but even he himself yelled out, let me just yell out. So I'm saying that to say, things like that happen when you're handling business and when you're trying to talk with several different people all at the same time, sometimes you will have heated debate and it's healthy, it's very healthy. So please don't look at us and think we're the only village that does this. The, the President of the United States does it, the Congress and the representatives in, in the halls of Congress does it. So this is nothing new, we, we were all, as human beings, always be debating, but we will always come to our happy meeting and get the job done and that's what it's all about. Uh, I'm not sure why my name was called out this evening, I haven't, I don't think anyone is doing anything. I'm not ca-, uh, accusing anyone of anything. I have a job to do and to get to the bottom of our finances, that's a job I, I was elected to do and that is the job I love to do. I thank each and every one of you for coming out every Tuesday, listening to us, having your business and sometimes with debate and, and, and along with our attorney, we all get heated sometime, but again, we respect every one of our chairs and I thank you guys and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Okay, um, just quickly, quickly, I mean, I've had you guys sit here long enough. Um, I just wanted to say, I appreciate what the trustee just said, I'd be nice if you practice what you preach, until, and I will say this. Until you can show or you show respect for this chair, I will always stop you because that's what you taught in the beginning, this respect, you're supposed to respect. I will, I, I don't talk when you're talking, but the last thing I want to say is, we as a village, I don't know, I, I know it is, and, and this is just me, my personal belief and it seems like it happens, but I do know that if you keep bringing this village down, that's not how you get in the office, that's not how you campaign because you hurt each and every person here. Because if we don't have people that invest, we could have the board re-coming here forever. The reason why our taxes went up because we don't have commerce here to offset some of this and why should they come if they ever come to a board meeting, listen to it or hear it or even see it, that we argue over every little thing. Tonight, did not, I didn't understand why we had to not vote to move forward with the zoning board. It doesn't hurt the village, it's not hurting anything to the village, we don't even own that land, but it, it's moving it forward. So I'm hoping that when we do get some, some commerce in here and it comes for a board that we can act a little bit more civil and quick pointing fingers, going back and forth and not respecting each other. I have a, I have, and, and I, I'm just going to say this myself, I'm going to try my best to respect each and every guy saying, not say nothing back and forth, I'm going to try, and that's where it comes from, but I'm going to try my best to do that because that's what I was elected to do is to move this village forward, not to hold up people's bills that's been here because then they get a chance to whatever it may be, but in the meantime, these people have to move one more week or two more weeks before they get paid. God knows if, if this was my check and I've had to rely on this board to, to pay me, I would be, I would be looking for something else because it doesn't make sense. I'm not asking you to do anything illegal, it's just pay for service and everything. At this time, I'll ask for a vote to adjourn.
Some will.
It was moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, second by trustee Williams, matter of fact, the police call.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Stan?
Yes.
Yes.
All security, remain.